Hi everybody, welcome to this special edition of the Idaho Park Talk Show. Today, we have a gentleman who is running for city councillor of Ward Mine of the city of Calgary. He's here to share with us his journey and his experience running for office. Everybody, please welcome Mr. Haddie. Hi, Mr. Haddie.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm very good, how are you?
Good, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you and thank you for the opportunity, thank you for having me.
Okay. So who is, who is Mr. Haddie? Could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Haddie, my complete name is Abdurizak Haddie, so my first name is Abdurizak, Haddie is my last name. But it's a little bit easy for most people.
Yeah, I had a hard time pronouncing the first name, I'm just gonna stick to Mr. Haddie.
It's easy, you can pronounce the way it's written, but people when they see a long name, they think that they can't pronounce.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, my name is Abdurizak Haddie, I came to Canada 2006.
Yeah.
Since that I've been here, I became Canadian citizen 2010. Since that I've been studying, I've been working, contributing to the community. Now I live the last five years in Calgary.
Right.
And finally, I decided this year to run city councillor for Ward Nine, where I live, in order to represent the community and also give back to Calgary, to Canada, to Alberta.
Right.
And serve the community.
Wow, interesting. So we're just gonna gain a little bit about your journey, because you have an amazing story and I think it's very important for people to know that you have, you know, coming from out of the country, but haven't walked your way to the system and then you decide to run for politics. How has that, how's that been for you in terms of an immigrant and then integrate into the society and then trying to run for office?
To me, politics comes as a natural.
Yeah.
When we are young, everybody likes something.
Yeah.
Some peoples like sports, different kind of sports, like soccer, basketball, hockey, whatever. For me, my kind of sport is like politics. I like to follow, I like to learn, I like how things develop.
Right.
When I was very young and back in Somalia, I used to listen BBC Somali service. When I was very young, thirteen, and then I learned how to speak Arabic and I was listening Arabic BBC, Blas de Somali, and I learned also English and then I was listening Fox on African BBC.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So I was watching and listening the news unfold everywhere around the world.
Yeah.
So, and also, community activist, I would like to help people, serve people. And then when you're involved, the communities, wherever you are, you see the need, you see what's needed, what's lacking. And when I came to Canada, honestly, I felt that I'm Canadian citizen before even I got my Canadian citizen.
Yeah.
I felt that I belonged to this country.
Yeah.
So I've never felt outsider.
Yeah.
So I have that confidence in me.
Right.
And so this year, I was planning to run somehow sometime, but this year after pandemic or during the pandemic.
You're like, this is the time.
I just said, this is the time.
There's no better time than now, yeah.
The incumbent.
Right.
The best time to run political office in Canada or the West is when the incumbent is retiring.
Yeah.
Or leaving.
Yeah.
So that means everybody's new at that time.
They kind of have like an equal chance.
Saying, yeah, saying, I'm here before you, I have more experience, I know. But even I didn't look that.
Yeah.
I just say, this is the time, you have to go and run and try. At least put your hands up and say, I'm ready to serve the community.
Yeah, yeah, good. You, you kind of spoke to a fact there where, you know, us as immigrants, sometimes there's that tendency to like separate yourself from the country, right? Like, I mean, you're kind of in a sense Canadian, but you kind of look yourself through the lens of an immigrant. But you didn't look at yourself that way. You kind of feel like you're part of the community and your contributions are very valuable and that's why you run for office.
To me, that's what I believe.
Yeah.
I don't believe that I belong to somewhere else, I'm just an immigrant, I'm a refugee.
Yeah.
I'm just a citizen by paper, no.
You're Canadian.
That I'm Canadian through and through.
Exactly.
As long as the constitution allowed me.
Yeah.
To be Canadian, I'm, and I live that way.
Yeah.
I don't believe that we have to sit and watch.
And divide ourselves.
This is our country.
Yeah.
We have to serve, we have to give back, we have to contribute, and we have to do everything possible according to the law.
Exactly.
And that's the only way this great country of ours become more greater.
Yeah.
Yes, we have to contribute all of us.
Yeah, but do you notice that tendency that immigrants are kind of like.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, I'm only Somali or I'm only African, I can be Canadian sometimes, but usually I'm Somali first before I'm Canadian and stuff like that. But meanwhile, you can have both and you can celebrate both, right? And you know? Yeah, I mean, we have our history, but we're part, we're Canadians.
Yeah, yeah, everyone has heritage.
Yeah.
But still, we are Canadian.
Exactly.
Right? We have to believe that one.
We have to believe that.
I'm Somali and also heritage.
Yeah.
And I'm Canadian, both of them, I love them, both of them, I like to serve if I get the opportunity, but I'm more Canadian.
Yeah, because people like to put those things like opposite, like you have to pick one or something.
Yeah, I know.
I think that does deserve.
You have to pick, pick and choose your heritage and again, the nationality where you, you've taken off residence, right?
Yeah.
So you moved to Calgary five years ago, I believe, and you reside in Ward Nine. Could you tell us a little bit about what you love about the world that you live in and if there's anything that you would like to change?
Ward Nine is a great and multicultural wood.
Yeah.
Everybody lives there.
Yeah.
And I like multiculturalism neighborhoods and vibrant society and everything that you need is there.
Yeah.
Especially all amenities that a new Canadian need, is there because there's many new Canadians in Ward Nine, plus the mainstream society.
Yeah.
So that's why I choose Ward Nine, that's why I bought a house in Ward Nine.
Yeah.
And also, there's a lot of issues in Ward Nine that I want to fix as much as I can, if I'm elected.
Yeah.
Could you tell us a little bit about some of those?
For example, safety, security is one of the problems. Homeless people are the main concern. To me, homeless people are not objects.
Yeah.
To me, they are family, they are friends, they are sisters, they are brothers, their fathers, their mothers. And they are suffering in front of us.
Yeah.
And no one did anything in Calgary, across the Canada and across North America. I know this is a problem for worldwide, especially in the West, especially in North America. If you go every major city in North America.
Oh yeah, homeless people.
There's homeless population.
I tell you, you know, before I moved to Canada, I didn't know there were homeless people in the street. To my greatest surprise, I'm like, what?
And, and the thing that I noticed is that when you talk to politicians or when you hear politicians talk, they talk a lot about homelessness, but they don't necessarily take any steps to resolve. So they, they do what they call a lip service, right? A lot of lip service, no steps. So talking to you now, I'd ask you, what, what, what approach will you be taking if you eventually voted into, into office? What approach would you take to resolve this?
That's a great question. What I am planning to do is at least propose, because when you are elected as councillor, you can do everything you want.
Of course.
You have to work with the mayor, you have to work with the councillors. But what I'm going to fight is I, I'm not going to watch anymore to see these people every day when I'm driving or walking around the neighborhood
Right.
or the wood, suffering in front of me, collapsing in front of me. So what I'm proposing is, let's build a center and equip whatever is needed, such as nurses, security, doctors, treatments, all that kind of needed. And let's put these people there.
Right.
And we can treat them. Everyone has different problems. Some of them has addiction problems, some of them has family issues, some of them has financial issues, mental issues, there's a lot of issues. Let's deal with them as the way it is.
Yeah.
And we can as a city, it's very rich, a city. If we put whatever we have, resources, I think we can do it.
Yeah.
So when we do that, the communities or all Calgary will be more safer than what it is.
Yeah.
And we don't see suffering people every day.
Yeah.
And also, the people who's related to these people will be happy about it. Someone take care of their people.
Yeah.
A city take care their people. So they will be happy wherever they are. So it's, will be win-win. The residents of Calgary, especially Ward Nine and other woods, and the people itself.
Yeah.
For example, the least thing we have, the least problem we have nowadays is we are putting our signs up everywhere, on the streets, on the people's lawn signs. They're taking out without intention, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're destroying our signs.
Oh, you mean just random people?
Lawn signs, yeah.
Yeah.
Homeless people.
Yeah.
They're destroying the lawn signs.
Yeah.
And we spend as candidates, all of us, we spend money, time and energy. Imagine if they are not there, our signs will be there.
Right.
But I'm not accusing them what they're doing, because most of them, they don't know what they're doing.
Yeah.
And they need help.
Yeah.
So I will fight for them and I hope I will start some conversation at least. And also, the city, I think, is doing something for building houses and talking about homeless, how to end homeless people. But as you say, lip services, or some people will, will say, it's not my neighborhood.
Yeah.
So they don't care. Yeah, so for me, I have to be in for them, not only for the other people, but for homeless people.
Right.
It will be my responsibility as long as they live in Ward Nine and I will work individuals, organizations who's helping homeless people.
Right, yeah. Um, maybe just to take us a little back, maybe for some of our viewers who don't really understand what councillors are, can you give like a brief overview of what that is?
Councillor, councillors, if I mention like back home politics or what they do here, like city MBs.
Yeah.
They represent the woods.
Yeah.
For example, in Calgary, there's fourteen woods. So each wood, one councillor is elected and that councillor will represent.
Yeah.
Any issues they have, they will be represented by that person in the city hall.
Yeah.
And the city councillors, what they do is they propose ideas, projects. They vote for policies, bylaws, all that stuff. They legislate something according to the city, city limited.
Right, so they work in tandem with the mayor of the city.
Yes, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And we're also having an elections for the mayor coming up.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, Nenshi, who's been there for the longest time.
Couple of years, yeah.
Almost a decade or more, I think more than a decade.
Twelve years, twelve years, yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's not standing up for reelection. What are your thoughts on that?
I think I'm a big supporter for Nenshi.
You liked him, yeah.
I like it.
Yeah.
And he did a very good job in Calgary and he has been fighting for the city and the people of the city.
Right.
Also, he was speaking the national issues, such as race discrimination, Islamophobia, all that stuff. But now finally, he decided not to run and to give other people a chance. And I respect he did that, because that is his own decision.
Yeah.
And yeah, so we are looking forward to a new mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have any particular candidate you're interested in?
Not really yet.
Not really?
Yeah.
You don't want to answer that?
You're not advocating for anyone, no, you don't want that. Some people have complained, I, I have, I listen, listen to the radio from time to time when I'm driving to work and people have complained that city council can be very toxic, it could be very hostile and very unproductive sometimes, right? So the question I'm trying to ask you is, what approach or how would you work with other city councillors when you, if, if you get voted into, into office? How would you work with other city councillors to get things done as opposed to just getting there and, and, and getting into conflict?
I think through dialogue and respect and understanding, that's the major thing.
Yeah.
As adults, work environment, and I know every city councillor working hard for their ward. And I'm working hard for my ward.
Yeah.
So sometimes you need to compromise and sometimes you have to fight hard for your people. But at the end of the day, if you want everyone to work together to get some job done.
Yeah.
So we have to work with respect and dignity and understanding.
The resources are usually limited, I guess that's what they would say. And, and I understand why maybe councillors have to put up a fight, so they have a portion of those resources diverted to their communities. Do, do you feel like that there is a fair process to ensure that every word has a little bit, almost the same equality in, in how they distribute or how projects are awarded to, to different parts of the community? Because I, I would say that when I lived here in the Northwest, in the South, in the North, North East, I got a feeling that North East of Calgary was sometime relegated or ignored a lot as opposed to people in the Northwest and the Southwest in terms of amenities and projects. So do you feel like that is the case and how would you kind of work with everyone to make sure that communities like this, who have been ignored for a long time, have a, a little piece of the cake too?
Good question. I think I hear the same complaint or the same thinking many times. I've never been in city hall, I've never been in as a councillor.
Yeah.
And I can't speak what inside, what's happening in city hall and how they fight and how the fight looks like. But I know one thing, all neighbors are not the same, all neighborhood are not the same.
Yeah.
All woods are not the same. The more, any councillor who fight hard, who come from a rich neighborhood.
Yeah.
Anyone who come has a lot of connections, I think may fight better than other people. But what I believe is, if you have the backing of your people.
Yeah.
If you have the need and you're communicating the right way, I think you will get something for your ward too and your people. And but my agenda is to unite Ward Nine communities.
Yes.
And put back in my, in, in behind me.
Yeah.
So they will support me, they know what I'm doing.
Yeah.
And my job will be every day to fight for them, to get what they need to be done. At least to increase the service that they don't have.
Yeah.
Or similar to what other woods have.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So kind of make sure that there's a balance in terms of.
Absolutely, yes.
The different neighborhoods and communities.
Interesting, perfect. Um, I'll start a little bit about politics, but I wanna go a little bit into your journey.
Yeah.
A kid from Somalia.
Yeah.
Came to Canada.
Yeah.
What were your expectations at that time?
Well, to me, I did not came myself to Canada. Canada was not new to me. Even if, before I came, I have many pictures and many information about it. My dad was here.
Yeah, oh, okay.
My brothers are in United States, some of them are in Europe.
Right.
So I have good picture about the West in general.
Right.
I didn't, I was not like the people who think, oh, they are paradise when you go to Canada. That's it.
Yeah.
All the problem left when you board the airplane.
Yeah.
That's not what I was thinking. I knew there's people there, there's bad and good, there's tough time for many people, especially immigrants.
Yeah.
Especially if you don't speak the language.
Right.
Luckily, I was speaking the language. I was feeling my own forms since, from the start when I was applying. And I have been sponsored by my dad and I came with my brothers too. So I think my journey to come to Canada and the integration and getting a job and all that stuff, it was easy for me.
Yeah.
I did not struggle a lot.
Yeah.
Money wise or who I supposed to leave or rent or all that stuff. We come as five people.
And your dad's a family, right?
My dad was here, my family and friends was here, the large community of Somali and African and many immigrants were here. So it was easy for me and also I came the right time, 2006.
Yeah.
And I landed in Ottawa, where my dad and the rest of family is.
Yeah.
I got my documentation and my dad booked us a ticket to Fort McMurray. And there was family and friends in Fort McMurray for us. And jobs was like available.
Crazy, yeah.
Yeah, so you can choose whichever job you want and you get it next day.
Yeah.
So yeah, money was not an issue to me. Getting a job was easy.
Yeah.
And so I did not struggle, I don't have any complaint. Yes, I was lucky enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was lucky enough.
Again, but not, not, not ignoring the fact that most, most, most people, some, some people come here without, you know, that foundation that you have.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, many people will struggle, I know that. Many people have high expectations. Many people thinking everything will be easy, but when they come here, everything become difficult.
Reality check.
Reality check and reality change.
Yeah.
And they have to live with that, right? And also, my community as a culture, we help each other.
Yeah.
Which is very important, right?
Yeah, we help each other, even in our national anthem, one of the lines saying, help each other wherever you are.
Yeah.
When you're in need.
Yeah.
I wanna give you, for example, we are in Fort McMurray, there's only few immigrants at that time. Especially African communities. I think Somalis was the, the major African community in Fort McMurray at that time. Fifty people, hundred people, and majority of them was Somalis. And other people, there's no way they can come, because they don't know anybody there.
Right.
And the rent is very expensive. And if you don't know somewhere there and that hand is pretty expensive, you can't come in. So our culture, for example, someone in Toronto, landed in Toronto and he cannot get a job.
Right.
He will ask friend and friend in Toronto, say, do you know someone in Fort McMurray? Because I hear there's a lot of jobs in Fort McMurray. And they say, yeah, I know someone. They will call someone, say, so and so in Fort, in Toronto, he's looking a job, but he cannot get a job in Toronto.
Yeah.
Can you accommodate him for a month until he stands on his feet?
Yeah.
And say, yeah, send him.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they will send in.
And these are people that you might not have ever met in your life, right?
No, no, no. They're just as Somali.
Yeah.
Yeah, just come in, eat, sleep, whatever, there's space there.
Yeah.
They will try to find a job with them.
Yeah.
They will give a ride, all that stuff, when they get a job and they can go their own.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Importance of community, community born.
And imagine that if you bring that idea into a larger, uh, 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 Ward Nine community, where people can support each other in, in different ways, right? It doesn't have to be exactly like that, but you know, know who your neighbors are, reach out, check in, see how they are doing.
And trust also is very important. Many communities, trust is an issue.
Yeah.
They're saying, yes, I like to welcome people, I like to help people, but I don't know this person.
Exactly, right?
For us, we don't have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as you're Somali, as long as you don't have doing bad things.
Yeah, right.
You're a nice person.
Yeah.
And someone is not running after you, yeah, you're most welcome.
Yeah.
We can help you, everything is possible, yes.
So from Fort McMurray, you moved to Calgary?
Yes, I've been in Fort McMurray ten years.
Yeah.
I did my college there.
Yeah.
I worked there and I moved to Calgary in 2016.
2016.
How, how has that been for you?
It was good. For example, I was renting at that time and the company I was renting with, I asked them to transfer me.
Yeah.
So when I came here, my house was ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just go to the office and get the keys and go in.
And that's it.
Yeah.
So you, you managed, kind of mentioned earlier that you really didn't bother to find out who, well, whether or not the incumbent was running. Again, the incumbent is Gian Carlo Cara, right?
Yeah, Gian Carlo.
Yeah, and he's, he's running, I think he's still running, right? So my question to you is that you, you made it very clear that sometimes it's difficult to beat the incumbent.
Yeah.
So what are your strategies? I don't know if you want to share them, but what, what approach are you going to take to make sure that you, 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 you are able to, you know, to challenge?
To me, my strategy is, for example, is honesty is number one.
Yeah.
I'm going to put everything I have for Ward Nine. But my platform, one of my platforms are a fair city for all. And opportunities and employment for all.
Mm-hmm.
The city, when you look at the city, the way they employ people or even companies, the way they employ people, the way opportunities are shared, is not shared fairly. I wanna fight for that.
Yeah.
I think the incumbent is not fighting for that.
Yeah. Um, when you say fairly, like how do you mean?
For example, what I want to introduce is, every Calgarian has the right to get the job they qualified for.
Yeah.
No matter what.
So hire people based on their qualifications?
Without not connection.
Yeah.
Without not knowing anybody.
Yeah.
Without no discrimination, by name or by face to face.
Yeah.
Discrimination has many forms.
Yeah.
Uh, some people, they may discriminate you by name when they see your resume.
Yeah.
Saying, as long as not John or Jerry, then, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I want the city, everybody can apply the job they need.
Yeah.
And they will be hired based on their qualifications and the experience. That's what I want to fight for.
Okay.
If that's not happening, then opportunities are not shared equally. The companies are not hiring people equally. And that's not a right thing. I believe everybody has the right to chip in, to send their resume, get the fair opportunity.
Yeah.
And then get hired that way.
Yeah.
So that's what I, of my strategy, also fighting for racism, Islamophobia and antisemitism. I have to fight for all that stuff.
When you tell people that, is there like a weird combination where you have to put Islamophobia and antisemitism in one statement?
It's not, to me, it's not, hate is hate.
Hate is hate, right?
Islamophobia is new term.
Right.
Uh, as you know, and antisemitism is all the, it has been for long. So if there's Jewish people in my ward or in the city.
Yeah.
And they have been bothered.
Yeah.
Or discriminated against, I'm there for them.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you're making a good point, because you usually have people who have to pick side.
No, no, for me, I don't have.
Fighting for Islamophobia or you're fighting for antisemitism.
I will be a councillor for everyone.
For everyone, yeah.
Honestly and fairly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm there for them.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm not there my religion, I'm not there my community, I'm there for everyone and I will fight for everyone.
Which is really sad when you look at the affairs of politics nowadays, everybody seems to be an activist of their religion
Yeah.
or of their race or whatever, right? Meanwhile, you're supposed to be there to serve the entire population as diverse as it is, right?
That's what I believe in.
Oh yeah.
I think.
Because racism is racism, no matter who does the racism.
But I think some politicians have, have felt or believe that it's divide, you divide.
It's called identity politics.
You do identity, identity politics. You, you figure out that I'm Christian and there are many more Christians in this world, so I would appease the Christians.
Yeah.
But again, I think your approach is different, is unique, that you're not, you're not, you're not, like you said, you're not there because of your religion or, or your faith or, or, or you.
My own community.
Yeah, you're there for the people who live there.
Yeah, as long as you live in Ward Nine, I will represent you.
Yeah.
You can knock my door, you can phone me, you can email me, as long as I'm your councillor, you can count on me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I also read you, one of your slogans, it's to listen, to learn and to lead. What is the inspiration behind that?
Always, it's better to listen than to speak.
Yeah.
You, you better listen more than speaking. So I like to listen, to get the wisdom of the people.
Yeah.
To listen the complaint of the people, to their concerns.
Right.
And then while you're listening, you're learning in the process. And when you have the listening part and the learning part, you can lead.
Yeah.
As soon as you're the, you're the politician or you are elected politician, you can lead to the right direction. Because you have all the tools.
Yeah.
That's why there's English saying, I think, if you have info, information, you have power.
Hmm.
So that's where it come from, yes, yeah.
Uh wha- what what were you doing before you decided to run for, or what are you doing before you decided to run?
I work in oil sands.
Oh, you work in oil sands?
I'm still working in oil sands, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the money there is not good enough, you want to go politic?
No.
Isn't that a misconception? Politics is not, does, politics doesn't necessarily pay.
Some someone's saying to me that today.
Probably that, the corrupt politicians are rich.
Someone's saying to me this afternoon.
Yeah.
Said, if you are working oil sands.
Right.
Why?
And you're doing this job, uh you have money, why you need politics?
Why, that's the question I wanted to ask you.
I said, I'm not entering into politics for money.
Right.
I'm making money.
Yeah.
I'm making the same money as councillors.
Yeah.
But I'm here for the service of the community and for contributing to my country, to my city, to my province, yes.
So yeah, motivation is very different from many politicians.
Isn't that sad that many politicians are actually getting into politics because of money?
I like serving and I come from a serving uh family.
Right.
Uh that my grandfather was uh serving people, my father was serving people, I wanna serve people. Uh that's what I enjoy, that one makes my day better.
Right.
Money is not making me happy.
Yeah.
Uh but serving people, solving the problem of the people, making a difference.
Yeah.
That's what my uh makes my day better.
I like that.
Yeah.
So um I we're going to talk a little bit about uh voting and how uh the the general rules that's around that, right? So how do you encourage people to go and?
Why is it important for them to come and vote?
I think uh voting is one of our civic uh rights in Canada.
Yeah.
And we need to exercise that.
Yeah.
Number one, uh especially the new Canadians, uh most of them, they come from anti-democratic country.
Right.
Or maybe their country are holding elections, but that election is uh it's not the way, the one we have like Canada.
Yeah.
So number one is your civic duty to exercise.
Hmm.
Number two, uh you have to elect the person you are looking for.
Right.
Uh and you're not electing the person, is the idea, the ideology, what that person is proposing, right?
Yeah.
So whenever you elect the person you want, then you got what you need most of the time.
Yeah.
Not all the time. And so that's why I'm encouraging the people, especially the new Canadians.
Yeah.
Come out and vote and elect the person you think is the right for your uh ward, so who can help you tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because if you don't vote.
Right.
Democracy will go down, it doesn't make sense. Even some Europeans, they are mandatory.
Yeah.
Have to vote.
I know when I lived in Belgium, if you don't vote, you you pay a fine.
Yes, Belgium, I hear, I have family and friends, that's what I hear.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
But it's different here though. But again, it's it's, I think people need to be encouraged, yeah, to come out.
And especially like uh particular immigrants and so they're always complaining, oh, we don't know what the right documents are for voting, we don't know where to vote. What do you tell to these people?
Yeah, so uh in order to be
Eligible.
Eligible to vote in Calgary.
Yeah.
You have to be Canadian.
Yeah.
You have to be over eighteen.
Yeah.
Uh that's, and you have to be a resident of the ward.
Yeah.
Yeah. For example, all Ward Nine people.
Hmm.
If they are of eighteen, if they're a Canadian citizen, they have the right to vote.
And Ward Nine, because I I'm trying to figure out where Ward Nine is, can you kind of situate that in Calgary?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ward Nine, I think it's one of the biggest uh
It is big, yeah.
Wards in in Calgary, it's very big. So I will mention one of the neighbourhoods or communities. Uh one of them are Alberta Park, Redson Heights, Applewood Park, Belverde, Benridge Riverside, Dover, Aaron Woods, Fairview, Forest Heights, Forest Lawn, Eagle Wood, Manchester, Ogden, Benbrook Meadows, Ramsey, Red Carpet, Cranry View and South View.
Wow.
That, those are some of them. Yeah, it's very large. And there's also industrial uh neighbourhoods.
Yeah.
Where many warehouses and shops are. I'm not including at the moment because most of the time it's not residence.
Yeah, they they work there.
Just workplace.
Yeah, yeah.
And if if the people leave that, those areas, it's Ward Nine. And also what they can check is uh the city of Calgary website, uh calgary.ca.
Yeah.
And the first page, they will, they can put on the address and they can know uh what ward they are in.
Right.
Who's the councillor is, who's the MLAs and who is the MBs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um how's this experience been for you, running for office? Uh this is your first try.
This is my first try. It is uh, it's a good experience. I'm learning many things.
Yeah.
And also most of the time, I'll, I'm expecting what I'm seeing.
Right.
Because when we go out for nor- door knocking.
Right.
Uh I'm telling my volunteer team, uh this is what we can expect, okay? So don't shock.
Yeah.
People are not the same.
Yeah.
Uh in Somali, we say people and the bush, you will see always unexpected.